Thank you, Honorable President. Julius is just completing the move to the parties and their representatives. So we are ready to start. We are ready to start, Honorable President.
Okay, Grace. So the parties are there, okay. Okay. Good morning. This is the hearing proceedings. In this application number 022 of 2017, parties are Harod Balanda Mutali versus Republic of Malawi. I would take this opportunity just to say good morning and welcome the judges and the parties to this matter. When we are ready to proceed, of which now, I will just call upon the registrar to proceed by calling up the matter before the court. The registrar, you are welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Presidents, Honorable Judges, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing in application 022 of 2017, Harod Balanda Mutali versus Republic of Malawi, convened in accordance with Rule 52 of the Rules of Court and the Practice Directions for Virtual Sessions in the African Court on Human and People's Rights. The parties to this matter were duly notified of the hearing in accordance with Rule 53 of the and confirmed their participation and their present today. I thank you, Honorable President.
Thank you, Honorable Registrar. Now may I call the parties' representatives from both parties just to introduce themselves to the court? Representative of the applicant, are you in? Please take the floor to introduce yourself to the court.
Good morning, Madam Judge President and other members of the court. My name is Sunuzi Amadiza, I am representing the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative of the respondent, please.
Good morning. I am President and the members of the court. I am Richard Santé, Chief State Advocate, standing in for Pajaro Gairan, and I am being assisted by Lumbani Mafurira. Thank you.
Can we see you? We don't see you.
We don't see you.
Yes, Lumbani, can we see you? We can't see your image here.
Why, Honorable Judge, we are just sorting out the chief state advocate's camera. It seems his camera setting is off. So we're just sorting that out, but they are all present.
Yeah, good morning.
Morning, morning.
For the sake of time, I've just decided to use Lumbani's laptop. And I am Richard Santé, Chief State Advocate, representing Pajaro Gairan. As I said, being assisted by Lumbani Mafurira.
So you are for the respondent?
Yes, for the respondents.
You said your name, Pidio Phan? Your name again, Richard?
Santé, spelled as S-A-N-T-H-E.
Santé, okay. You have been assisted by who?
Lumbani Mafurira.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Having known the representative by both parties, now I would like to invite the applicant to make his submission. Applicant Representative?
Thank you, Honorable Justice. If it pleases the court, let me just give a very brief summary of the matter before us. The applicant is the son of Mr. Balanda Mutali.
Before you proceed, I think you have that program. You have to be mindful of time, please. The time allocated for your submission.
Much obliged, much obliged, Honorable Justice. So I'm saying that the applicant is the son of Mr. Balanda Mutali. He brings this application as a dependent as well as the person who has the letters of administration of the other estate. In this application, the applicant is seeking reparations for the abuse of human rights as well as property rights against his father. The applicant filed an application as well as a summary, an executive summary. The applicant also filed a list of documents as well as the documents themselves, which he is going to rely on. Further, the applicant has filed a witness statement, which he will use when his time comes to give testimony. Honorable Members of the Court, because of time, unless I'm guided by the court, I will address the issue of admissibility in brief, but rush onto the questions that the court submitted for us to consider as questions for the hearing. It is our submission that this matter is admissible before this court because the applicant has exhausted local remedies. We are aware of the submission by the respondent. But that, as it may be, the applicant argues that under the current laws in Malawi, the applicant whose father's property was confiscated in 1976 currently does not have an effective remedy in the courts of Malawi. We should submit an order of the High Court in Malawi striking off the applicant's claim, which was filed in that court on the basis that it was statute barred or that it was beyond the period of limitation. This is a fact that the respondent concedes that it is not possible currently for the applicant to use the current court to get remedy. We therefore submit that the applicant has exhausted local remedies and will refer the court to paragraph 27, sorry, paragraph 23 of the applicant, which is on page 7 of that clip, and page 8, where the applicant has provided an exhaustive list of the points that support his submission that there is no reasonable prospect of any remedy within Malawi. I'll then move on. Question for hearing. So, Honorable Members of the Court, I fully adopt the evidence in the applicant's claim. Questions that were asked, Honorable Members of the Court? Letter to why the applicant's father's property was targeted for confiscation. The truth of the matter that the applicant doesn't really know. And at that particular time in Malawi, reasons were not usually given. Where their property was being forfeited to the government. The law did provide that reasons must be given. And in this particular case, the applicant's property was forfeited through a notice, which was published as and this has been tendered. And whatever the applicant has written or has said in the document that was submitted before court is what the applicant was told by his father as a possible reason. Honorable Members of the Court, the other question related to whether the applicant's case before this court is about the failure to implement the decision of the National Composition Tribunal. We will draw our attention to the report of the ombudsman, which has been submitted in Malawi, which analyzed or researched on the conduct of the National Composition Tribunal. And in that report, it was found that 98% or around 98% of all the cases that came before that tribunal were never finalized. The applicant's case or his father's application in the tribunal was sadly one of those that are in the 98%. The tribunal never finalized the case of the applicant's father. And we did file documents to the effect that there were a lot of communication between the applicant's father and the National Composition Tribunal and that the matter was never finalized. And furthermore, Honorable Members of the Court, it was because of this that the applicant filed, the applicant's father filed the matter with the High Court in Malawi, but was deemed to have run out of time. So in brief, there was not decision of the National Composition Tribunal. So the applicant's case before this court is about the decision of the respondent to confiscate his deceased father's property and the subsequent failure to pay compensation and reparations for the loss as well as the subsequent injustices that were suffered by the deceased and his family, including the applicant, as a result of the respondent's conduct. We also filed a list of the dependents of the applicant's father, who had a total of nine children. And all these children grew up destitute whilst their father, before his property was confiscated, had enough property that would have enabled them to grow up in a relative way of the family. The other question, Honorable Members of the Court, relates to the composition and the calculation for the composition amount of US dollars 1,104,539.87. And the applicant based his value on the valued property as at 1995, which was just over 10 million. And Honorable Members of the Court, I'll draw the cross attention to the applicant's responses to the questions for hearing, which were filed with the court and on page 3 under question 6. So I will not go through all the details, Honorable Judge President, save to say that the amount being claimed by the applicant is premised on the Malawi kwacha equivalent of the dollar in 1995 and using a conversion algorithm based on the fact that in 1995, Lumbani Mafurira and therefore projecting it using inflation and other calculations, the applicant submits that the figure of 1,104,539.87 is a fair deflection of the property that was confiscated. And Judge President, at this point, the applicant would wish to to state and note that the respondent's case largely rests on the issue of admissibility. The respondent has chosen not to respond on the issue of reparations. The applicant would therefore submit that if the court were to find that this case is admissible, which we submit it is, then the court should find for the applicant in the amounts prayed for reparations. Madam Judge President and Members of the Court, let me pause for now and ask any questions should there be need.
Thank you, Counsel Madiza. And thank you for saving time because you you didn't utilize all the time and thank you for that, for saving time. As it is now, before judges have opportunity to pose any question, you are supposed, as an applicant representative, to proceed with your witness examination in chief, followed by cross-examination and re-examination, if any, and judges will come up with questions, which will be posed to your witness.
Much obliged by the President.
Okay. Is your witness around? He can be ready for
Yes, Honorable Judge President, the witness is around and is ready.
Okay, we can proceed now with examination in chief.
But maybe he needs to take oath first?
Yes. That's what I said, we can proceed, but the registrar is there to make sure that he takes oath first. Registrar?
Thank you, Honorable President. The clerk of court will now administer the oath to the witness. Mr. Faradi, kindly proceed.
Hello? Witness? You will speak after me? You can raise your hand. Raise your right hand.
Faradi, you can proceed. He has done so, he has raised his right hand. You can proceed to administer the oath now.
Madam President, let me step in. I think he's having connection problems.
Can you take over, please?
Yes, Mr. Mutali, kindly repeat after me. I?
I.
Your name, state your name.
Harodim Balanda Mutali.
Swear?
Swear.
Upon my honor and conscience?
Upon my own unconsciousness.
I will tell the truth?
That I will tell the truth?
The whole truth?
The whole truth?
And nothing but the truth?
And nothing but the truth?
Thank you, Honorable President. Your witness has taken the oath.
Mr. Mutali, can you tell your full name to the court again?
I'm Harodim Balanda Mutali.
And what is your address?
Here, post to Facebook, 692 Lirongwe, Malawi.
Can you confirm to this court that you are the son of Balanda Muziwapala Mutali?
Yes, I confirm.
And can you confirm to this court was detained and had his property confiscated in 1976?
Yes, I confirm.
And Mr. Mutali, there is a witness statement that has been filed with the court. If I allow you to look at the witness statement as well as the signature that is there, just to confirm that it is you, Honorable Judge President, if I can be allowed to show the witness the witness statement and this signature, please?
Yeah, you can, can proceed.
Thank you. Can you confirm to the court that that is your witness statement?
Yes, I can confirm. It's my witness statement.
And you also confirm to the court that that is your signature on page 8?
Yes, I can confirm.
Now, Mr. Mutali, you have also referred to certain documents which are provided for in the list of documents that were filed and which you rely upon. Can you confirm that you are the one who supplied those list of documents?
Yes, I can confirm.
Would you like to tender this witness statement as part of your evidence?
Yes, I tender this list as part of my witness statement. Yes, I tender this list as part of my witness statement.
No, not just the list. Can you confirm that you want to tender the witness statement itself as part of your evidence?
Yes, I would like.
Now, your witness statement, like I said, refers to certain documents which are in the list of documents. Would you wish to tender all these documents? And these are documents from, which are listed from number one. To number forty six. Would you like to tender these documents, all these documents as part of your evidence?
Yes, I'd like to tender them as part of my evidence.
You have also referred to three other documents. There is one for the calculation. Of the damages, the repressions. There is one. Written by Mister Kishu Chwaka as an article and then there's a report of the Ombudsman. Would you like to tender these as part of your evidence?
Yes, I'd like to tender them as part of my evidence.
Madam President. Would like to wish that these documents be tendered and maybe be appropriately remembered. According to the rules of court.
Okay, unless there's any objection from the other parties, honorable judges. The applicant witness wish to tender the witness statement. And all the annexes in the list as part of the evidence. I can see there's no any objection from the respondent's side.
Thank you, Honorable Judge President. Honorable Judge President, since my witness has adopted the whole witness statement. As well as the annexes, annex there too. It is not our wish. To spend time going through the very issues that are already submitted in the witness statement. Therefore. We submit this as the evidence in chief for the witness. And that would end our examination in chief. Thank you, Madam Honorable Judge President.
Okay. Is there any cross examination from the respondent's side? You are now allowed to take the part for cross examination.
Uh, thank you very much, Judge President. We have a few questions to ask the applicant.
Richard.
Yes. Yes, Judge President, can you hear me?
But the some noise is coming, disturbing this.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Can you hear me?
You have problem in connection, I think your internet there.
Madam Judge President, if I can just say something about the connection.
Yes.
If the problem is not internet, the problem is that they either have two machines. And both of them are giving output in terms of sound and they're cross feeding.
Okay.
So they either need to shut off one of them or they need to mute, to take out the sound so that either use their earphones or listen.
Thank you, thank you. Richard, are you ready?
Uh, Judge President, can you hear me now without any interference?
Yes.
Yes, uh, I'll say that we have a few questions to ask the applicant. And we will not waste the course time. We'll just go straight to the points. Uh. I would like to refer the applicant to paragraphs thirty five, thirty six. Of his own witness statement. And I just want him to confirm that. The High Court. In two thousand and eight, through the registrar. Throughout his application, based on a. Limitation period. I just want him to confirm that that happened in two thousand and eight.
Yes, I can confirm.
And the follow up question would be. How convinced are you with the judicial system in Malawi?
Uh, I am convinced to an extent, yeah.
To an extent, uh, assuming that you have lost the case at High Court level. What are the steps that you have to take if you are still interested in pursuing your matter?
You appeal to the Supreme Court.
The Supreme Court. Thank you very much. Did you appeal to the Supreme Court?
It was not appealed with an explanation.
Hmm, why?
That the moment, uh, the, the court made that, um. Decision, my father, my father's health deteriorated. And at that point was, uh. Following up the case I had not yet joined, so he couldn't go ahead and appeal in time. As he was sick.
Uh, you have said that you are nine children.
Yes.
Uh. Are you the first born or the last born?
I'm not the first born. I'm the fifth born.
The fifth born. Is the first born still alive?
Yes, he, she is alive and chronically ill.
Okay, uh, yes, your dad could have been chronically ill, but. Why is it that not even one of you, you are nine in total? Consider to pursue the murder with the courts or administratively with the government? Considering that you are nine, you, you cannot all be attending to your father at the same time. At least one should be free. To pursue the murder that your dad started pursuing with the courts.
Uh, all, all my siblings unfortunately are not in a position to follow what need to be done. They didn't have the chance to go to school, so they didn't know what to do.
Okay. Uh, then when did you take up the matter?
I took up the matter in twenty twelve.
Then what stopped you from twenty twelve to make the appeal to the Supreme Court?
I was advised by. My lawyers when I approached them, that at that point it wasn't possible. Uh, to go to the Supreme.
Why? Why is the question?
Because the time had lapsed and the laws of Malawi wouldn't allow.
Uh. Did you immediately take up the matter with the African court then, in twenty twelve? After being advised that you can't pursue that matter with the domestic arrangements?
The first course, my lawyers. Through my lawyers, we wrote the attorney general. Attorney general's office. That was the first course before afterwards taking it to the African court.
Okay. Would you call that a judicial processes or administrative processes? The letter that you wrote engaging attorney general, were they still part of the judicial processes?
As I said that I have, I'm limited on issues of law. I wouldn't know the difference of the judicial or administrative processes.
Okay, using your limited knowledge of law and judicial processes, is attorney general part of the judiciary or part of the judges in court?
The attorney general is not part of the judges.
Thank you very much. Uh, on a preparation. Who valued the property? And which property are we talking about?
Um. On the value that was done in nineteen ninety five and has been tendered. I found that amongst the documents that my dad left for me. So I wouldn't say the actual person who valued it. And on your question of which properties, this includes. Uh, the company that he set up where he had the fishing vessels. Um, it includes vehicles that were, um, taken by the government. It includes household materials that were auctioned by J. Darwin's. Um, by the government. So it's his properties.
Uh, is this the only property that your dad had? That was confiscated by government?
No, the government also confiscated houses. At the place where he was living.
Did you get back, did you get back any of the property that was confiscated from government?
Yes, through sheriffs. Through sheriffs that were sent by the High Court, we got some of the houses in dilapidated condition.
Uh, this house is included in your submissions that you actually got back from government?
Yes, we indicated that is some property we are giving back.
Uh. In terms of, I've heard that you're talking about depreciation of property. Was this assessed by an expert to come up with the figures on how much the property had devalued? Just your opinion based on the documents that you had.
Uh, Madam, I didn't get the question.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you there.
Is it possible that property devalues with the passage of time?
Yes, it depends on the type of property.
About the property in question, can it devalue with the passage of time? There are machines, there are refrigerators and so on. Can they depreciate with the passage of time?
Yes, it is possible.
Uh, was the devaluation of the property, depreciation of the property. Assessed by an expert in your own interpretation of the records that you have?
Then at counsel, you should try to wind up your cross examination because of the form allocated.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, in, in, in my opinion, I would say it should be, it should be considered because that depreciation. If any, it took place when the materials had been confiscated and were not under my father's use.
Uh. I've just noted that he didn't respond to my question, but for the sake of time, let me stop there. Uh, Honorable Judge President.
Which question, which question that would not responded?
The last one in which I said, based on his own assessment. And based on the documents that he has. Would you say that the depreciation value was done or assessed by an expert? Or that's what they think the property was worth it?
Okay, witness, can you respond to that?
Madam Judge President. I don't know if it was assessed by, um, if the depreciation was assessed by an expert. But I continue to say. But I continue to say, if anything, the depreciation shouldn't be considered because then that depreciation took place when the materials had been confiscated from my father and when it was under the custody of the government.
Okay, thank you. Um, any reexamination?
Uh, thank you, uh Madam Judge President, yes, just a few questions. Um, Mr. Mutari, you say that all your siblings have not gone far with education. Why is that the case?
My father, after he had his properties confiscated, he couldn't manage to send us to school. At least for me, I went up to Form Four High School and then did night uh uh traditional education. But my friends, they managed because my father didn't have money to pay for our school fees.
Now, you were also asked uh whether you did anything regarding the matter after your father passed on. And in your witness statement, you referred to letters that you wrote to the attorney general. Why were you writing these letters to the attorney general?
We were, I was seeking justice, which I felt my da- my father not accessed, not accorded. So I thought the government through the Minister of Justice would right the wrong.
Now, my brother also asked you several questions about the property. And you say that you found it amongst the list that was left by your father. Now, you also asked whether you have received some of the properties and you said they are in dilapidated condition. Can you explain what you meant by dilapidated condition?
The houses which were confiscated and given to the Fishers Department were being used from the time that they were confiscated in nineteen seventy five up to when they were given back. And the houses uh really in dilapidated condition because they were not being maintained. And some of the houses were even raised down, were destroyed.
What is the position of the houses now?
They are still in dilapidated condition, they are just staying.
So they are not being used?
Only one is being used where my brother is staying in. But just because he doesn't have another place to live, to stay in.
You were also asked the issue of depreciation and value of the property. Are you yourself an expert of property?
No, I am not.
So, did you see this property by the time it was being confiscated from your father?
No, I did not see it, but my father told me that they were relatively new when they were being confiscated.
Okay, just one last question. You were also asked if this was all the property that was confiscated. Let me put it this way, from what you know, was there anything that was left of your father when the piece property was confiscated? Did the government leave anything with him?
The only thing that he was left with were the clothes that he was putting on on the day that he was arrested.
Uh, thank you, Madam Judge President. That would be all in terms of reexamination.
Thank you. May I invite Judge Vice President to ask the question to the Vice President? Vice President, are you there? Okay, while the Vice President is there.
Mr. President.
Yes, can you, can you do?
Thank you. Um, well, my mic was muted, I'm sorry. A question I would like to put to the applicant as follows. Does he challenge the principle of some token reparation as allowed by the National Compensation Commission? Or would he just uh took it from this? Instead of what was or what he has asked for in his applicant? Thank you.
Madam Judge President, if you can ask that the question be repeated, I'm sorry, but the translation wasn't very clear and the witness didn't fully apprehend the question. I also didn't fully apprehend the question. I'm sorry, Madam President.
Yes, Judge VP, if you have at all, you can repeat the question, please.
We, 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 yes.
Madam President, my question is is the witness or the applicant challenging the fact that it could be a token reparation as required or asked for by the National Compensation Commission? Would he prefer what he is up for instead of that token reparation? Thank you.
Madam Judge President, we are sorry, but the, it looks like we can hear the judge, the Honourable Justice, when he's speaking in French, I think, but the translation is moving up and down.
Do you hear the interpreter? Can you hear the interpreter?
Yes, but you seem to be moving up and down in terms of your voice, so if you could maintain just one level so we can hear you. Now I can hear you properly, thank you.
Yes, the judge is asking whether you could, or the applicant. Okay, let me repeat, says the judge. The question is as follows. Which mean that he would receive less than what he has asked for in terms of compensation in his application? Is that clear now?
Thank you, that is clear.
And can the witness respond to that?
Y- yes. He, yes, we, we can accept uh a token of compensation, which we hope uh may be fair as adjudged by the, the court.
Madam, Judge President, if I can intervene?
Yes?
I think it may be possible and I believe so that my client, the witness, does not understand the term token compensation because that's a term of art. It is a legal term and he may not fully understand what it actually means.
Which term? I beg your pardon, which term is a legal term which he couldn't understand?
The token compensation, token compensation.
In another language, yeah, a token, in another language, can we use that the judge, president meant the symbolic reparation, if at all? Can he or can, can applicant accept that? That's what he meant?
Thank you, Madam President, Judge President. Uh, now I understand. No, we, we would not accept uh the token compa-
Thank you. Uh, another question is, can you provide a nominal and exhaustive list of the heirs of the deceased as an administrator?
Yes, I, I, I can provide.
Yeah, can you just mention them?
Yeah, so they are, the deceased, my father left uh nine children. Uh, we are, there is Margaret Mutari, daughter to the deceased. There is Samuel Mutari, son to the deceased. There is Elliot Mutari, son to the deceased. There is David Mavani Mutari, son to the deceased. There is Harold Belanda Mutari, son to the deceased. There is Manjija Mutari, son to the deceased. There is Figani Mutari, daughter to the deceased. There is Enifeggi Mutari, daughter to the, the deceased, and Yawelela Mutari. So these are the nine dependents that the late Mbalanda Muzwaba Mutari left.
That, that the all? Are those only hairs? Are those the only hairs of the deceased estate?
Yes, we did, I, I, I did the inquire and these are the surviving uh hairs of the deceased.
Okay. Honorable Judges, any judge who want to make a follow-up question? Judges?
Yes, please.
Yes, Honorable Anukam, you're Honorable Anukam, you can take the floor and ask your question.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, I have a question for the applicant. Probably the counsel for the applicant could also take up the question. I want to begin by probably elaborating on the question asked by Vice President. Uh.
Hello? Hello? Uh, Honorable Anukam is disconnected, I think. Honorable Dean, Judge Kyoko, can you take the floor and ask your question?
Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Honorable President. My question is to the applicant, but I think later on the respondent could also answer this question. And this one could be answered by the applicant or his lawyer. That tribunal was created pursuant to the constitution of the respondent.
Honorable.
Two voices now.
Honorable Anukam?
Madam President, I don't know. Should I continue or?
No, no. Just wait, Honorable Kyoko was asking, then you will follow, please. Because you are disconnected, I think.
Okay, I thank you very much. So the question I'm asking is um to be responded to by both the applicant and the respondent state later on. And it's a legal question, so it may be answered by the lawyer for the applicant. And it is this, that the National Compensation Tribunal was set up after, under Chapters Eight of the Malawi Constitution with a mandate for ten years. And in the constitution, it was indicated, which has been submitted to the court, that the tribunal shall entertain claims with respect to alleged criminal or civil liability of the government of Malawi, which was in power before the appointed day. Now, that is what the constitution says. Now, the lawyer for the applicant says, say that the tribunal did not complete about ninety-eight percent of the claims that were before it. My question is, why did it not complete its work? Was it because it was set up late? What was the reason by, of not completing most of the, the, the cases? And then secondly, I would like to understand this phrase in the constitution. "We shall entertain claims with respect to alleged criminal or civil liability of the government of Malawi, which was in power before the appointed day." What was the context in which this part of the constitution was enacted? Um, I don't know whether that is clear to both the applicant, the applicant can respond now and the respondent can respond later, when they have the opportunity.
Uh, thank you, Honorable, Honorable Justice. Indeed, the National Compensation Tribunal was set up almost after the One Party Rule. Because the constitution was negotiated before there were elections, so it was negotiated in nineteen ninety-three. And it took effect on the day that the country had its post-one-party system elections. The reason why its work did not, was not completed is in our submission provided by the investigation that was done by the Ombudsman, who issued a report which was tendered before the court. And essentially that the setup of the tribunal itself, not the law, but the way it was set up administratively, was such that it was set up to fail. The people who were composited were mostly politicians or people with high-level connections, who, some of them had been incarcerated and detained during the one-party system. The other reason which the Ombudsman found was that the Compensation Tribunal itself was never funded. That there were never, many funds allocated to it. So it was a tribunal that essentially didn't have the resources to give out compositions to those who had been victimized during the one-party era. On the issue of On the issue of the context, the context, honorable justice, was that during the one-party era, we had a lot of human rights abuses. And that Malawians or those who were affected did not have recourse to any remedy. Because at that time, no one could take up a matter with the courts without challenging any civil or criminal wrongdoing. And one such piece of legislation that was built afterwards was the Forfeiture Act, under which Malawians and other nationals lost their property on the, essentially the orders of the then-president. So, this provision was enacted as a way of providing reparations to Malawians and other nationals who were affected for criminal or civil wrongdoings, as well as human rights abuses. That is the reason why this was enacted. I thank you, honorable justice.
Hello?
You can pick up the phone.
I'm satisfied with the response, Honorable. I'm satisfied with the response.
Okay, honorable judges, we are, we are supposed to direct our questions to the witness, who is still under oath. He's the one to respond. And, uh, councils will have their time immediate after the, the witnesses have finished his testimony. So, judges who follows other questions, please could do that, and the witness is the one to answer. Then later on, we have at least twenty minutes to ask question to the, to the legal counsel for the, for the applicant. I just wanted to, for you to know that. Then Judge Anukam, you can take the floor, followed by Judge Chafika. You direct your question to the applicant, to the applicant's witness.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I have two questions for the applicant. In your evidence, you alluded to the fact that certain properties were released to you. And I would like to know if those properties are part of the claim before the African Court. And secondly, when the, when we had the properties that were released to you, released to you? And if we can ascertain that they are different from the claim before the African Court? And the second question I have for you is regarding the equivalent of the claim in, used in, in Malawi. You know? As to what they could award a victim, which is ten minutes. And nothing more.
Excuse me, honorable judge, justice, if you could repeat the second question there. The connection was not very good. The first one was clear, but the second question was unclear. Thank you, honorable judge.
I'm done with my question, Madam President.
Okay. Applicant witness, can you respond to the question raised by the judge? You have asked a question.
Ma- Madam Judge President, I've heard the first question, but I struggle to hear the second one. So if the second one can be repeated, or I first of all answer the first one?
Answer the first one, then I'll be.
I'm to be guided, madam.
Thanks to judge to ask.
Okay. Yeah, so the properties that we are giving back are houses that are in Mangoji District in Malawi. Uh, these were given back in two thousand and eight. And they are the ones that I referred to earlier on, that I, and in my witness statement, that they are in dilapidated condition. Uh, the houses are not forming part, uh, part of, um, request for, um, uh, compensation. Um, they are only being referred to as, um, for the court to consider, uh, for the loss of use for the period that they were under the government position. And then considering that they are now in dilapidated condition. So that's my response to the first question.
Anukam, can you repeat your second question quickly? Are you with us, Judge Anukam?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Muthali, my second question is first, actually in two parts. One, if you are aware, that the National Compensation Tribunal had a limit as to how much they could award to any victim, which is, that is in Malawi currency. And then my question is, what is the equivalent, we realize your is in United States dollars? What equivalent of your claim in Malawi currency? Thank you.
Madam Judge President, to the first part of the question, I'm not aware of the limit that the National Compensation Tribunal had on the compensations. And as for the Malawi equivalent of the amount that is being, um, claimed, that would be around, um, eight hundred and twenty-eight million, if we are to use an exchange rate of seven, of seven hundred and fifty Malawuacha per dollar. But I would also hasten to say, I haven't checked the current exchange rate. It may have depreciated.
Yes. Honorable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chafika.
Merci, Madame la Presidente.
Thank you, Madam President, and good morning, everybody. Madam President, I have two questions. I will try and speak slowly for the benefit of the interpreters. The first one is the following. Decisions were rendered by the High Court of Malawi. There was a judgment by default, and there was also a compensation order, where these decisions enforced and the handover of houses, was it a follow-up to these decisions? Now, my second question. The list given of properties for compensation, do you have any documents certifying the ownership? You're talking about vehicles, you're talking about boats. Do you have any documents proving that all this belonged to the family? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank, thank you, Madam Judge President. Indeed, a default judgment was entered. And the, the repossession of the houses by the, through the sheriffs were a part of that default judgment. To an extent that when we, when my dad, when I escorted my dad, when we went to the court for the assessment, the expectation was that, that he had was that now he was going to be compensated for the injustices that had happened. Unfortunately, the final judgment was that the court said we still had to look at the National Compensation Tribunal, which at that, at that point had been closed. So, although the default judgment talks of that he needs to be compensated, he was not compensated. And this led to the deterioration of his health and eventual death. On the second question, on whether we have documents to ascertain ownership of these properties. As I earlier on said, when the, his properties were forfeited, the police initially came to arrest him, and he was not allowed to take anything apart from the clothes that he was putting on. And they locked all his properties, and even my mom and my siblings, then they couldn't take anything. So we don't have any proof that he remained with. Uh, for the land, we had to go through, for properties like he lent, we had to go through the legal aid to ask the Minister of Lands to furnish us again with, uh, uh, proof of the, uh, the title deeds. But for the other properties, unfortunately, everything was lost when he was arrested. We don't have anything.
Honorable VP, that will be the last question.
Merci, President.
Thank you, President. Just a brief question for the applicant. He has informed us that there are nine surviving children of late Mr. Muthali. Are the eight other children informed about this proceeding? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Judge President. Yes, all the eight siblings, including me, we are aware of these proceedings. Yeah, that today the hearing is taking place, they are aware.
Merci, President.
Thank you, President.
Thank you. I don't see any further question to the witness. So now this is the end of testimony of our, of the applicant witness. And he can be excused from the witness box now. You, we invite judges again. If they have any question to the applicant counsel for further, um, information or clarification, judges. We have ten minutes for that. Judge Chafika? The question should be directed now to the applicant's legal counsel. Legal counsel can answer on behalf of your client. Judge Chafika?
Merci, Madame la Presidente.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, thank you. Uh, I would like to ask the legal counsel of the applicant the following. When a citizen loses documents, uh, by virtue of the laws of Malawi, when a citizen loses documents such as title deeds and so on, is there a possibility for him to get a duplicata or a copy? Do you have any department, like in my country, where you can go and tell them that you've lost a title deed or any other document, and they can give you a duplicata? That's my question, Madam President.
Uh, thank you, honorable justice. Uh, Madam Judge President, yes, we do have such a department, the Department of Lands, as well as the Registry Department. And I would say that in this particular case, the documents relating to land, uh, the jubilates were found and they were, have been found with the court. The problem related to the, to the movable property, where it was difficult to get a jubilates, because it's only now where you have a personal property registry that has just been set up. So it was going to be difficult at that particular time. But also, at the time when the property was actually confiscated, uh, the deceased could not go and ask for jubilates. Because at that time, no one would have helped him because of the circumstances, the fact that he had been detained, the fact that his properties had been confiscated by an order of the president. But after that, yes, it was possible to get jubilates of the title deeds, but not for the, for the movable property.
Judge Anukam? Judge Anukam?
She's muted.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Madam President. Let me clarify. Um, it's interesting to note that, um, quite a number of properties were confiscated. Uh, that was in nineteen seventy-five. And then, as we were told this morning by your witness, certain properties were released thereafter by the respondent state. Do you happen to know the circumstances in which some were released, whereas the one that is in issue now is not released?
Uh, thank you, Madam Judge President and members of the court. The circumstances for the need of those particular property was because there was an order of the court. Uh, the applicant's father went to court after noticing that the National Compensation Tribunal was not assisting him and had closed shop. A default judgment was entered. In pursuers of that default judgment, the sheriffs went to seize some of that property. Those are the houses being referred to. Unfortunately, when the matter came for final assessment of all the property of the deceased, the court ruled that the matter was statute bar and dismissed the whole application. It is because of that, that the applicant's father could not do anything. So the property was released because sheriffs or bailiffs went to take hold of that particular property. But there is, and we've submitted this as part of the evidence communication, showing that efforts were made by the National Compensation Tribunal to have certain. By the National Composition Tribunal to have certain properties released. But that some of these properties were resisted by the people who are now in charge of it. Thank you, Madam Judge President.
Honorable Judges? Anyone with a. Any follow-up question, if you don't have? I think we can. The court is going to be adjourned for. One hour. Before we resume again. And continue with the proceedings. Register, the court judges, we are going to have a break of one hour before we resume again. To proceed with the proceedings. Is it okay or we can? Do we have any? Judge Dean?
Yeah, I think it's quite okay, Honorable President.
Yeah, so now the court is adjourned for one hour, then we'll come and resume.